Okay.
Call the main door. Yes, sorry about that. Uh, let's do a question.
The United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under our indivisible liberty and justice.
Maybe please do a roll call.
Sure, Chair Burisi.
Present.
Commissioner, Commissioner Layton.
Yeah.
Commissioner Connell.
Here.
Commissioner Tenai.
Present.
Commissioner Irons.
Here.
And just so everybody is aware, um, we've been recruiting to fill Jacob's position. And then with Ethan's appointment to the city council, um, I did reach out to him and he did officially resign. Monday or Tuesday, so we're not recruiting to fill both positions, so I would just encourage all of you that if you know anybody who might be interested in joining you on this once a month. Uh, to encourage them to send me a letter or an email or something uh before the first, I think we said the first of November. So we can get folks appointed um at the November city council meeting.
We'll do it. Uh, has everyone had a chance to read the minutes? Yep. Uh, if we have either discussion or if anyone would make a motion to accept. I have no qualms with that, but I'll motion to approve the September twentieth minutes. If there was a second, uh, we need a roll call vote.
Absolutely, Commissioner Irons.
Yes.
Commissioner Tenai, affirmative. Commissioner Connell.
Yes.
Commissioner Layton.
Yes.
And Chair Burisi.
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Record of business. Uh, we need Vice Chair.
He didn't serve very long, did he?
No. Uh, does anyone? Want to volunteer for the role, have a desire? Try it out? I will. You want to do it?
Yeah.
That's pretty easy.
So we have a volunteer?
We do.
So uh, let's just confirm that by by uh roll call vote.
Uh, yeah, we. We need a motion for that, do we, for to appoint the chair?
He volunteered, so I don't think you need a motion per se, but I would like to confirm it with a roll call vote.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. So for uh Sam Irons to serve in the role of Vice Chair, let's start with Commissioner Layton.
Yes.
Commissioner Connell.
Sure.
Commissioner Tenai.
Yes.
Commissioner Irons.
Yes.
Chair Burisi.
Yes.
All right, congratulations, Commissioner Irons.
Congratulations.
All right.
Okay, we have a public hearing tonight. A public hearing on site design review, RVW two three dash zero 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 one zero is called to order. Lam Weston, the owner and Ryan Companies, U.S. Incorporated applicants, subject property described as tax lot one three zero zero of accessory map. Four North twenty five East eleven and is owned general industrial. This request is to approve a construction of four buildings, uh, for building additions and related site improvements to an existing industrial facility. Criteria found in the Board of Development Code, chapter two point three, general industrial district.
Your says eleven?
Five years eleven?
Twelve years eleven.
Yeah, it's ten, it's ten, yeah. We, we, we started out with a typo and we didn't get it fixed everywhere, so it is ten.
Uh, four North twenty five East ten. And criteria is found in uh Board of Development Code, chapter two point three, chapter four point two, development review and site side review section. Four point two point six zero zero approval criteria and provisions within chapter three, design standards is being processed as a type three decision. Uh, were there any other issues? Mike, we're good?
Um, this will quick on your agenda, it says twenty five E and on the column I think it just says twenty five, so do we know what it is?
Twenty five.
It is E.
It's always E.
Okay, well then we should probably have it in both places that way, but if not, that's fine.
It's always E.
Okay, sorry for my ignorance on that.
Nope, that's okay, it's, it's.
I imply and I should, just when I see it, I should imply it, we don't go as E everywhere.
So in the Kadash, in the Kadashal mapping system, um, E just means it's, it's a long.
I understand what it means in there.
I just had it two different in your documents, two different places, it's not the same.
Yep.
The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows, staff report. Public testimony in the following order, applicants. Any testimony in support of the application. And testimony opposing the application. Any mutual testimony and an applicant's rebuttal, if there is any. We'll then close the public testimony, after the record is closed for testimony, no other testimony will be heard from anyone unless the planning commission has a specific question. But. They ask questions of staff, after which the planning commission will discuss the matter and make a decision. Planning Commission may make a final decision tonight, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain in the future. If the matters continue, this will be the only notice of that time and date you will receive. If he was to speak, for testimony, please write a testimony form and submit it to the associate planner. I will recognize people wishing to speak, any questions should be addressed through me, please state both your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. As the hearing is being recorded. Please keep testimony concise to the point, testimony should be on the action under consideration and address the substantial criteria. The criteria that apply to the decision are listed in the staff report, testimony and other issues will not considered by the planning commission. Failure to raise an issue in sufficient detail to allow the planning commission and the parties of uh the ability to respond to the issue prohibits an appeal to land use board uh appeals based on that issue. Similarly, failure to raise constitutional or other issues regarding any conditions of approval in sufficient detail to allow the planning mission to respond. To the issue prohibits a lawsuit in circuit court on that basis. Now I ask members of the planning mission to disclose any exporte contacts, bias, or complex of interest, please indicate the nature and extent of the exporte contact. Bias or conflict of interest indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge a planning commissioners impartiality? Hearing done. Uh, staff report, Carla, is that you tonight?
That is me tonight. So we are here tonight to authorize the construction of four building additions and related site improvements to an existing industrial facility at the Lam Weston's West plant. Uh, we have with us tonight both the applicant and uh the owner uh representatives. As we stated earlier, it's tax lot thirteen of accessory map four North twenty five East ten, is own general industrial, I think most people know where it's at, but just for clarity, it's on the north. East corner of Olson in Columbia. Uh, at the address, but this will address the six hundred Columbia Avenue Northeast in Portland, so. It's been operating as a potato processing facility for over fifty years, um. It's seen numerous changes, and I, I highlight that the age of the plant. Uh, mostly because when it was originally developed, uh, we didn't have development code, we certainly didn't have the current development code, and that's why you see some of the things in there going, hmm, they can't meet standard. There wasn't a standard when they built, and so here we are, we just kind of have to deal with what we have in front of us. Um. So they're looking at four building additions, they're going to modernization, as they go through all this, there's also be a lot of changes inside the building. Um, so planning is really the first stop of, of a couple within, within the process for the city, there'll be some limited utility review, although there's not a lot of changes to that, um, we've had, we did have a site team meeting. Uh, we've had the fire department and other um affected agencies and entities participate in that, it was a good discussion. Um, uh, the fire department just asked that we, that they maintain site circulation, um. Post construction and during construction. And then uh we've, um. Once you're done with planning and the utility review, again, that's pretty minor, they'll move into the building permit program, so. Uh, a lot of stuff going on in the building, there'll be a lot of changes, they're trying to time this with their outages and variety of other things, so it's gonna be an interesting process to watch it as they work through all of those pieces. Um, one of the things that's come up is we did have an inquiry uh based on a joint property owner notice from the Oregon Parks and Recreation District. Um, and the question was really about sidewalks related to the project, um, in front of the building there along Columbia. You'll notice we didn't address that in any kind of detail in the staff report, we can certainly have that conversation, um, I'll, I'll, I'll touch on a little bit as part of the staff report and then. We will have comment this evening and we'll. We'll go from there, just, oh, for now, I'll just leave it at that. Um, the applicant uh did a great job with what they submitted, uh, they provided us a lot of information, very specific, um, and uh. Pointed to the criteria that was applicable, uh, they did submit the application back in Sep- in mid-September. Uh, we deemed it complete, we held a site team meeting. I don't remember the specific date of the site team meeting, I don't know. Was it the twentieth September? Okay, that sounds about right. Um, so again setbacks, uh, a couple of things happened with setbacks, again, most of setbacks are, are there meeting that. Um, but again, we're, we, we've got building height issues, where they're exceeding building height. And again, this goes back to, was it built when we have the current requirements? Um, the code says that if you're gonna exceed the building height, you have to have a conditional use permit, I don't know if they have a conditional use permit, that building height exceedance is already there. And so part of your decision tonight, I've incorporated in it is just an acknowledgement, building heights already exceeding the standard, and they're not further, you know, they're not significantly further exceeding it, so, um. I, you know, I, again, I'm, I'm trying to find that balance between it's an existing facility and we're approving additions to it and, and what the code says. So the proposal, um, with a pre-existing exception can meet the requirements there of setbacks. Um, saying, uh, it does meet the proposal requirements for lot coverage. Um, building height, again, um, that's the conditional use permit, and I'm just asking you to acknowledge, I don't know if the conditional use permit was issued at the time the building was exceeded. We're just gonna, this is a type three, this is the same process that a conditional use permit would go through, with the same kind of notice requirements. So I'm just asking you to acknowledge whether one was issued or not, that we acknowledge a height exceedance and we move on. Um, uses with significant noise flare, like dust, nothing's changing, it's a potato processing plant today, it will be a potato processing plant at the conclusion of this. And all construction projects, there will probably be some construction noise, some construction um influence that will happen, uh, we're getting pretty used to that here in Portland, you know, a lot of construction going on all over the place. Um. When we get to vehicular access and circulation, they are making some changes to the internal circulation, they talk about that in what we provided here. Um. In our, in our, in our conclusion as staff, again, we, um, discussed a couple of items related to circulation and uh access on the Olson. Um, also with fire apparatus circulation needs, again, I kind of touched on that a little bit. Um. What I ask to make any improvements to Olson Road, we are asking that they enter into a remonstrance agreement with the city of Oregon to participate in future improvements. To Olson Road, and again, I mean the portion of Olson from north of Columbia. And the portion that's concerning to the city is from Columbia to Eldridge, and, and it's narrow, there's not enough right of way, we need to address some of those issues with that road. Um, but I don't think it's appropriate to encumber this project specifically with that, but to ask for their future participation in those improvements. Um. I'll be honest, uh, Marty Broadbent, the fire marshal brought up a squeeze point in the fire circulation, I'm not quite sure I know where that is, but they do, and he does, and that's really what matters. Um, and again, at the site team meeting, there was agreement that they would retain what there is, it's, it actually doesn't quite meet the twenty feet, like five inches. And so they're just gonna maintain what's there, uh, the, the building is, it's, it, they're not further encumbering it, and it's already encumbered. Uh, landscaping, street trees, fence, and the walls, um. The interesting thing here is that there's really no landscaping on this site, um, there's a bioswale. Might be a little green and that, but there's really no landscaping, and there hasn't been since the, the facility was built fifty years ago, and again, when you look back that far in time, we didn't have a landscaping standard like we do now. Their east plant is beautifully landscaped, and I said, well, you know what? Do an analysis that looks at both and see if you meet it with both, and, and they don't. Even if you combine both sites, they don't meet the full landscape, they need the landscaping standard for the new plant. They don't need it for the old plant, and there's really no place to meet the standard. So it's, again, it's kind of like, okay, we, we'll look at the age of the facility and, you know, we know what we want to strive for, we're just not gonna get there with this. It's a built environment, they need the parking, they need circulation, the plant takes up so much space. So, um, you know, staff are acknowledging that it doesn't need it, um. And. Again. We've found it to be consistent with previous approvals, so there we are, um. So they also did talk about new security fence, um, will be chain link with barbed wire to match existing. Uh, fencing with barbed wire is allowed in industrial zones for security purposes. Uh, so again, um, if this was a different zone, it would require additional authorization or approval by the planning commission, but because it's an industrial area, barbed wire is allowed in that place. Um, vehicle and bicycle parking, they did all the analysis, uh, determine the minimum and maximum number of parking spaces, they're there. And again, there's really no changes happening, and there's. There's X number of employees today, and there's gonna be basically X number of employees when they're finished with this, so, um, the number of parking spaces aren't gonna change, they are, however, reconfiguring the parking. And, um, if I remember right, they're moving some light poles. So there will be some changes to parking, but again, it's to facilitate a better circulation, um, and better utilization of the spaces that they do have. They already have disabled parking per- um, disabled person parking spaces on site. And, uh, they're actually exempt from bicycle standard, but they already have bicycle parking on site, and they're not changing that, so I think it's nine bicycle parking spaces. So again, we found that the proposal meets the requirements. Public facilities, um, they didn't provide a response to that particular criterion. Um, and I missed that in my initial review, so as we got into, um, the conversation and when the sidewalk comment came up. As we were working through the staff report, this is where we identified it. So it's not the intention of planning staff as far as these findings are concerned. To require sidewalk improvements as part of this site improvement project, um. We are asking that the landowner work with Oregon when sidewalk improvements are installed. That does not mean that you're not gonna have comments tonight, that you can't have a conversation about sidewalks, that's part of your discussion and deliberation, so I don't want to get into that now, I want to just kind of let the public hearing process happen. And when we're ready to have that conversation, we're gonna put everything out there, I want you to hear from the applicant, I want you to hear from the commenters. And then we can kind of figure out where, where we're going to go. Um, no new buildings, uh, or building mountain, mountain signs are included in this project scope. Um, if they do change any signs, um, we do have a sign for that process, they will need to make application for any signs outside of this process. And then under temporary use permits. I really appreciate it when an applicant looks at the whole code, and they, and they respond to everything they need to, and they did identify that they will need, um, authorization for their, um. I'm trying to remember what, what they, they actually had a name for it, um. To be used by construction personnel as temporary offices and a separate building to be used by plant personnel as a temporary shipping office. During construction, the proposed shipping office and break room, so they will be actually having two kind of temporary uses happening, they'll be the construction project trailer, and then there'll be another place that will be a temporary, and it may be one of the same, it may be two separate. Um, when they get to building permits, they'll have to clarify where those are on the site plan as temporary. Will authorize them as part of this process, and then building will kind of determine where they are and how they're managed during that. Construction process, if I remember right, is about eighteen to twenty months, so they can clarify if I get anything wrong here in, in a couple minutes, so, um. Property owners were notified, that went out on September twenty sixth. Uh, we did provide agency notice to the Department of Transportation, the fire district. Um, internally to our public works and city engineer, and then to Board, Boardman Parks and Recreation District based on their inquiry. And then again, yes, site team meeting was held on September twenty eighth, it was well attended. And at this point, the only commit, uh, condition of approval that planning staff are recommending. Is the remonstrance agreement for future improvements to Olson, Olson Street. Sorry, I worked in the county too long, it's Olson Road, but it is Olson Street inside the city. So that, I think that concludes my staff report, unless there are any questions.
Uh, one question. Uh, and forget my ignorance, uh, wouldn't it be a non-remonstrance agreement? It wouldn't remonstrance be any challenge to opposition to? They're in agreement to, right, they're not, it's not a contest.
Right.
It could be a non-remonstrance agreement.
Where is that at?
H.
H four.
I believe it.
Um. Hmm.
I don't know, you might want to fact check me.
Well, well. Well, um, yeah. We'll, we'll figure that out while we're in the.
But I understand the intent.
Yes, the intent is to encumber their assistance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And questions? Uh, was there any correspondence? I'll send a second.
No correspondence, other than the, um, we had the inquiry from, um. Mr. Shimer. Oh, but no correspondence otherwise.
And that's, that's the sidewalks, right?
Mm-hmm.
And where are we gonna discuss that?
We, we could discuss it now, but I would encourage you to get testimony from both the applicant and the party, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, the applicant may now present any testimony, ma'am.
Well, first, first, uh. You can go and share everything else you'd like. Alright. Thank you, uh. First, the person, I'm in the firm, Sheta, um, the project is out there with Ryan Companies. Uh, Ryan Companies is a real estate developer and design builder headquartered in Minneapolis, and I work in the Minneapolis office. Uh, we've been working with Lam Weston on this project for about the last year, and we did it to this point now where we're ready to, uh, get. All the city approvals to the form of the construction. Uh, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have, uh, I'm the one that prepared our, our response and supplemental for the application. Uh, so I, I think I, I can handle our, with those things of those trajectory here, uh, answering questions you, that you might have. Uh, is there any information you need from me at this point in support of, uh, the staff report or any questions you have with regard to the project?
What's the, what's the, um, temporary like traffic impact, construction wise, I mean, how many guys you're expecting on site?
Uh, I don't.
When you're going full.
I don't have a full number when we get there, but there's probably gonna be several hundred, uh. Construction workers at any one time, uh, the bulk of those people will be there, uh, at a plant where, at a time where the plant. Uh, will likely not be processing, so some of the employee traffic may be reduced, they may be replaced by construction traffic during that period. But you're, you're absolutely right, there's gonna be a lot of material coming in to the site, uh, we are looking at, uh. Locations to have, uh, laid on areas to be able to store materials that will not impact the traffic on Columbia. Uh, but we're in the process of doing that now as we're getting ready to mobilize for construction.
Thank you.
As Carla mentioned, uh, we do have four building additions that we're putting on the exterior of the building, they're all relatively small in relation to the size of the plant. However, they are, they're being done in a phased manner to be able to facilitate. Internal renovations that need to happen inside the plant, so we need to kind of shift some functions around. Uh, on the outside of the building, be able to work inside the building and, and renovate and modernize their, uh, processing operation inside the plant. When Carla was mentioning the, uh, temporary trailers, uh, there is an office, uh. It's probably what he told them, that people are really gonna be interested in, but I'm gonna geek out on a little bit anyway, so. One of the things we need to do is we need to move a break room inside the plant for some other operation. And we're having a hard time finding a place to put that, so in order to be able to build a new break room. We're gonna remove the shipping office that they currently have, and then build a larger addition there to house both of those functions. And in order to move the shipping office, we need to put in a temporary trailer to serve as the office for the shipping. Function while we're building in a new home, and so, uh, a lot of show games that we have to play with, with a project this complicated, it's just to get it all together.
Uh, I had one question, uh, for any future, uh, sidewalk issues. Uh, is there gonna be an issue with the, with the current construction, uh? Along Columbia, like we have to move a fence line in the future, or will we? Set the distance to with a future sidewalk in mind?
I thi- I think the fence line is back far from the edge of the road, that hidden sidewalk or that big winner would not impact the location of the current property fence.
So the current fence line, are you expecting to keep that same fence line?
Yeah, we're not, we're not moving any fencing along Columbia, the only place that we're gonna be modifying fencing is probably. Uh, from Columbia toward the building on the east side, it's just, there's fence there now, we're just gonna reconfigure the fence after we put our new building additions on. Uh, the remainder of the perimeter fence at facility is gonna remain as it currently is.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for hearing us tonight, and I appreciate the time, uh, I'm Brian Jackson, I'm the plant manager of the facility, and want to share a little background, the reason why we're doing this, you may not know, so I'll be brief, I'll just give you a little bit of context. Here, the project is intended to modernize our facility, as Carla mentioned, the goal here is a current expansion, I think it was for character and that is expanding. Um, there's been some concern with some of our partners around divisional water usage and additional, and to the. The community, uh, even more in the industry, probably, and. This is the goal of this project, is really modernize the facility, be able to have more flexibility within our walls to produce some different products, that allow us within our company to do some different products down here. Uh, so at this point, I just, just to clarify, this is really a modernization project, very similar to what we did about six years ago, we had significant work, we've opened a boiler house. Uh, new refrigeration, monitor compressors, that, um, we had a pretty tall building, just one of the new buildings that we put in there, so, pretty significant modernization. This kind of thing is gonna be very similar to that type of work. Uh, I was involved in that project as part of our engineering group, so they will be down here and see that. Uh, very similar impact, from a construction perspective, we talk about construction traffic. We have plans that are very similar to that, as we've been thinking about how we're gonna make sure we have minimal impact to the community in the areas we go through the construction, so. We have a contractor, did an international network before, and it's our role to continue that, so. Um, just wanted to share that, and I mean, I'm open for any questions as well as you might have. Thank you.
Thanks. How long is, just as a drop, how long's construction, uh, the construction phase duration? So if you're asking.
Right now, I think it's going to be between fifteen and eighteen months. We're, we're, we're almost ready to start committing for building permits. Uh, I actually have. Uh, if I can get some. Uh, paperwork from Land Weston, we'll do that this week. Uh, we can look at the break ground probably in November. And I think the project will wrap up. Probably end of the first quarter of twenty twenty five. So essentially fifteen, fifteen months.
And you, you said there's, you're not playing on, uh. Having traffic impact on Columbia or like. Construction traffic. Other than vehicles coming in and out.
Right, we're, we're using the same access points that exist to plan now for the construction traffic access. Uh, so we're trying to generalize of what we're doing on, on the Columbia side. Uh, if, if we're able to move, uh, Lisa land on the west side of Olson. Uh, that I think is now coming forward property. Uh, we would like to use that for today and so any problems traffic we have would be on Olson and would not be on Columbia.
Nice, smart.
Well, yeah, one of, as far as, uh, contract workers do, one of the areas that we use. Six years ago, the project was across by the data storage on the south side of Columbia, just the crosswalk facility. It's our tent and most likely have some parking over there as well to accommodate that. So. The likelihood of having a crosswalk or something similar hold them for it will be some. Some storage over there and some parking likely over by those storages to gain our tenancy to minimize that impact. Uh, have a discussion for the hour and one more than that. Some of those things happen. So again, all the traffic we have for our business to the community during minimal impact, if any.
I remember that when you guys, when everybody was parked over there, um. All the cars facing Columbia on that side by the, by the storages, I watched a guy almost get ran over. There, my shop is just right up from you guys and, and, uh, so the. The, uh, it was, it was a young kid with his lunch pail trying to run across like he was late. And, um, so, and I don't remember any crosswalks or anything back then, temporary or otherwise. I, I would, would really like to see something. A little more, um, substantial than. What was last time maybe. I mean, I can't remember completely, but.
Yeah, that, that is a very good point. And I, as they run companies and I'm Weston are all concerned about worker safety, uh, whether it's. Their employees, our employees. Uh, so we, we would, if, if we end up going with that scenario where we're working across the street, we have talked internally about. Putting in a temporary crosswalk and having the, you know, the signals where someone's crossing to push the button and the lights flash. So the traffic knows that something's going on in there. So if we do end up working with that scenario, we absolutely would take steps to make sure that. Uh, our employees are. And the contractors are, uh. Safe when crossing the road.
Thank you. Any questions? I didn't have any questions. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate the impression. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? Does anyone wish to speak against the application? Do you have any neutral testimony?
George Shimer from the board of parking wreck, uh. I am not against this project. I think it's a great thing modernizing more just like they need to do. Uh, my concern is, um. Sidewalk usage. Uh, I really think that the project should include a sidewalk to be added on. Um, we're getting, I'm, I'm, I'm looking down the road where we're going to have to be all people tied water, uh, tied water apartments. Uh, when, when that facility is built, we're going to have more workers there, the workers at Boardview. Uh, I'm seeing more people walk. Work now, right? You know, they're riding the bikes. So there's going to have all laws of that on the streets. But, um, we're seeing more walkers, uh, just recently, you know, they said approved that the sidewalks put in, the city put in. Uh, with funds from B C D A to help out. I, I, our town's growing so well. Um, I think, um, we really need to enforce, uh, the code of. As we deal more construction, we need to make sure where we can put in sidewalks. We need to do that. And I think there's a perfect opportunity to, to make sure that does happen and nothing against the, I think. I've looked at the plans extensively, um. And I just think it's a recurring situation for you guys, uh, at Land Weston, um. And I think further as we go to our city limits and provide sidewalks throughout that whole stretch. Uh, little, little, little people that are, they're, they're, they're coming, so we've got to find a meeting for their. More transportation, uh, or views. You know, or a mile away. So I know the people that walk from there to go to work now. If it's so close for them. So there's, that's, that's one thing I saw that. It's not going to affect our business at the rec center, uh. We get, plenty of their workers, I'm working out. So that's a great thing. So it's not going to affect that for us. So. Um, which was, that was on this project. You want to add for me?
No, uh, can you state your address for the record? Uh, so. You'll watch it. Or one, one redrives, yeah. Thank you. Uh, does the applicant wish to provide rebuttal? Was nothing negative? Do you wish to respond to the neutral comment? If you have the opportunity now, if you'd like to, yes.
Hi, I'm Brian Jackson. I'm Weston, um. Good comments, very much appreciated. Understand, uh. Mentioned lots of times, we're, you're committed to this community. We want to do lots of things to help this community, um. As we understand and have some direction around also all improvements, uh, basically not opposed to helping with any of these things. Uh, certainly understand it's in the hall of our best interest to do this thing. As with the, uh, requested remonstrance agreement, we are, we're asking for more information to understand how as we get into those. Uh, agreements, we certainly want to participate together on our future improvements. One request we have in this, um, because it stands tonight for those type of decisions. Fairly authorized at this point to make the decision regarding the sidewalk or not to that magnitude. Um, what we would ask is that this would be uncoupled from this project. To be discussed at a later time or as a parallel work stream in order to be able to understand. What the request is and maybe what the best solution might be as well. Whether it be on our side of the property or on the other side of the street, however that looks. You certainly want to understand before making a decision. So what's the best for our folks who are using those surfaces? And, and the cutback as well as crosswalk. At certain spots and thinking about traffic counters. But I care that we're, we're very supportive and open to improvements suggested and ask that. It'd be, uh, I know from this project, correct? You can still, we can't construct timelines and have good, beautiful discussions with the people. Thank you.
Thanks. The public testimony portion of this hearing is now closed. Does that need to respond to a question raised by the testimony?
So, um. Couple of things, um, I'm just going to try to focus a little bit on the side. I mean, since the sidewalk issue is the one thing that's, that's here in front of this. So, um, again, we didn't have the conversation with them, uh, in the pre-application process about the sidewalk. They did not address it in their application. It's kind of come up, this conversation has happened and we've gone through the public notice process. Um, and now we're here, we have comment about it. Um, I did reach out to our city engineer. Um, I also talked with our public works director, um, asked. Uh, Mr. Frank to be here tonight to answer any specific questions you may have that he can answer that I may not. Um, the city engineer, he passed testament for the sidewalk. Uh, the additional construction cost would be somewhere between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Um. That's a fair amount of money. Um, I, I can respect the request from the applicant to decouple it from this decision. Um, to maybe not let it go, but to not encumber tonight's decision with it. Um. Uh, in talking with Mr. Frank, our public works director, um. There's, there's, there's a curve and gutter, the curve is there, uh, street is there. Fence is there and the space between where the sidewalk could go, it was on the north side of Columbia. That's how some sloping issues, um, and there could be a, a couple of places where there could be some fairly significant fill to get to the point where you could put the sidewalk in at the. At the width standard that we would need, but there is adequate space between the current curve and the fence. So there's space. There's some slope, um, and I think, I think the city engineer, when he said, he first said it's probably a hundred and sixty, hundred and sixty-five. And then we talked about the slope and fill and he's like, well, make a range a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five for all the, you know, the whatevs. Um. I don't disagree with Mr. Shimer's comment that at some point in time, we need to start enforcing what the code says. And I can tell you that in the last year and a half, as you well know, sitting here and listening to me, we've been working to do that. And in some cases, we've honestly tried to do it in an incremental way. To, to get, to get to where we need, but understanding that when. It, it's hard to just, um, you know, on Monday, not require a whole lot and on Tuesday require everything. And so it's been. It's been kind of a juggle for me to work, to work through that, to figure out, you know. Getting people to move along and I have been very blessed that there has been support and leadership. To, to do that, to say, this is what the code really says. I mean, you know, we, we need to be moving there. Had an interesting conversation with someone else about should we do gated parking lots or not? And I hear a lot of people say, yes, we should be, then no, we shouldn't be. Um, and the particular individual we were conversing with really likes the no, we shouldn't. So, you know, it's hard to be, you know, all my time at the county, when I first started there. The county adopted their first transportation system plan in nineteen ninety-eight. And within weeks of that being adopted, Gary Neal came in and applied for a subdivision. And Gary had to build the roads to the standards in the transportation system plan. And he's like, why me? It's like somebody's the first one through the door. So there is this balancing act about how you, how you get from where you've been to where you want to be. And on the sidewalk issue, when you drive around town, we will regularly see a sidewalk in front of this house and a sidewalk in front of that house. But the two houses in between or the house on the other side of the street doesn't have sidewalk. Why? You know, it's a question that we've been scratching our head around and have been trying to figure out, you know, how do we fix that? Um, and it's not something we're going to fix today or tomorrow or in the next year. But it's something we're trying to figure out how to put a plan together to fix over time. And I think sidewalks in the industrial zone, you know, we really haven't had that conversation. Uh, we haven't required sidewalks in the industrial zone. Um, there's a walking path in front, along Columbia in front of the, the rec center. And so the question kind of is, well, is a path a better alternative than a sidewalk? I don't know. Um, in the zone that where, uh. Uh. Laurel, uh, where the new Devon Loop is, where the, um, the big gas station, uh, the card lock is and the farmer's car. That particular code, the code provisions for that particular zone. Say sidewalk or walking path. It's, and so it's kind of like, well, maybe we need to decide if it's going to be sidewalk or a walking path and make the code more clear. And it's going to be a walking path. Do we have a standard? And no, we don't. So there is a walking path that's already there in front of the rec center. Is it, is it? Is it reasonable maybe to say, well, what if we ask them to participate in a future project to continue the walking path rather than sidewalk? I don't have an answer. Um, but. I will appreciate your deliberation on this topic and I'm happy to chime in with answers. And again, Mr. Frank is here and he is also staff and he can provide his insight if you have any questions for him. Um, but we're, you know, unless you have a specific question for either the applicant or. Or Mr. Shimer's, we're working through this. The, the hearing part is closed. So it's really to your deliberation now. I don't know what else to share other than I'm not giving you clear direction and I know that. So.
That's okay.
Yeah. So I'm going to appreciate your questions and I will do my best to answer any questions you have if it comes up as, as you go through your deliberation on this.
Yeah, there was actually one question I had was a, a walking path because, you know, we've got the. The path here along Main Street, not a sidewalk, walking path. Uh, I think you do a great job of keeping it beautiful and. Uh, well kept. Uh. I also, I don't know what the standard is for. Here along. Commercial businesses.
Right. And, and the standard is for curb gutter and sidewalk. Um, but again. Um, you know, there's been the practice. And so it's again, it's kind of saying, well, this is what the code requires. This is what we've done in practice. How do we get from where we've been to where we think we want to go? And for South Main Street, we are looking at a pretty big, um, rebuild project. Um, and I think that project sadly is going to end with, sorry, Jackie. That walking path coming out being replaced by a more traditional curb gutter and sidewalk installation. And I say. That because there has been, had a lot of input into that, into that walking path. So. You know, I, Boardman is growing. I mean, I, we heard that tonight and we can see that. And this kind of investment only encourages Boardman to continue to grow. And as we do that, um, we're going to experience growing pains. And if these conversations about, does the path still work anymore are going to be tough discussions and tough decisions. And you guys certainly have a role in informing what that policy could be or should be. The city council will make those final policy decisions, but. Um, I think for tonight, you know, the question is, do we or do we not attach the sidewalk to the project? Um. And. Again, that's part of your deliberation, part of the final decision you'll get to. Um, and if you decide to attach it, then how? Um, if you decide not to attach it, then I would encourage you to find a way. Um, you know, through a recommend, you know, a recommendation that the city continue the conversation, not only with Land Weston, but with other. Industrial users along Columbia about what we do with the sidewalk along Columbia. In that industrial area. Important question. And I agree with Mr. Shimer. We are seeing more people walk. We are seeing more people bicycle. We are seeing that.
Go ahead.
Right, but with them, we really want to encourage people to be walking down where all of those semi trucks and everything else are going to be. I see, I see a problem with, okay, yeah, let's put a sidewalk down there. How many kids are going to be riding their bikes and walking down there? And how many people are going to get hurt because they're in an industrial, industrial area where they shouldn't be?
Good questions.
Um, I can, I can tell you that, uh, again, because my, my shop, all my equipment is right there and right across from the new, um, uh. Well, at J and D Electric and, and I watch people, the amount of people that, that walk. Using the new sidewalk from the high school and that crosswalk. Past Portview, um, and I don't remember. I know there was, there was a lot of conversation about who was going to put that sidewalk in. And I don't know if the city ended up doing it.
The city worked, the city collaborated with the B C D A on that.
Yeah, so, um, but they continued that past Portview. And all the way, I mean, they kept going. They built, kept building it, you know, and the amount of people that I see walk by there now. And, and no kids because there's nothing down there for them except. Maybe to get to the rec center, but I think they come the other way on frontage anyway, but I don't see any kid. Like what I do see is workers. A lot of them and almost all day. Um, if, if I'm at the shop that long, but they're, and they walk mostly on the north side of Columbia. Um, sometimes on our side, on the south side, but not as much because there's not as much room to walk between the pavement. Once that sidewalk ends. Um, they're walking on the dirt. There's more shoulder over there on the north side than there is on the, the other side. Um, and I'm. I'm, uh, I'm one hundred percent behind, uh, continuing that sidewalk. Because as, as people pay more attention to everything like health, now the walking path is great. But it's not a, it's not a, it's not a, it's not something that starts and stops it at intersections the way a sidewalk would, you know, um. And I, I, um, I just think we're going to see more people walking. And now there's a, there's a good contingent of them that walk to, because they. And now there's a, there's a good contingent of them that walk too, because they live in the Macario, uh. Apartments, those little apartments right there, um, but I also see them carrying lunchboxes. Early, uh, late at night, and it's kind of dark down there, which is another thing that probably will come up at some point. But as we move forward, but I think, I, I don't think that we should tie it to theirs. To this project for the simple fact that their budget's already done. Uh, probably a long time ago, and, and. I know the head, the headache goes along with asking for another hundred and fifty grand. Um. But I do think that we need a commitment to, for them to make sure that they have this discussion with us further down the road as we move forward. Because it's, it's really necessary, it truly is, and I think if it has to meet, it should go all the way to. Boardman Foods. That, I mean, eventually. Because I say, I see a lot of people walking and there's gonna be more. And everybody wants to be healthy.
We do traffic study, uh, down on that in Columbia? Did we do one of those recently down there?
No, we've not done any, any traffic studies on Columbia. Um, we've recently had some traffic counts done on Main. Uh, but we've not done anything on any of the side streets. So.
For those, do they estimate what traffic from those?
Not unless you specifically call it out, and you can certainly do that, but when you are doing. You know, cars, they get, sometimes with traffic studies, they'll do visual counts, and sometimes they'll do visual counts and then the, the. You know, you drive over the clicker.
Yeah.
Um, sometimes they'll do the clicker and then they'll confirm with visual. But pedestrians, you almost have to, unless you put in cameras and can sit and count them later. You almost have to do pedestrian counts, um. You know, the in-person visual account, so. They're less done, but, um, you know. Maybe something we can think about, how, how, you know, how is the city, do we, we're, we. We actually got a grant to update our T S P. And so it might be a really good time to have that, you know, to have that broader conversation about. Um, maybe just to the T S P and potential inputs and development code around. Our transportation network, but also our pedestrian and our bicycle network, so it might, I mean, this might be a really good kickoff to having that. Broader conversation and incorporating some of that work into what we're doing with our transportation system plan.
Uh, I am in agreement with need to run sidewalks down there. Uh, I do not want to attach to this project just because that might set a precedence for. Uh, O P C or cold storage that may want to expand in future and, and they're gonna see, you know. Oh, well, they had to add this at, at the last moment or, or whatever, and, and they may not want to expand. And so I don't want to see it attached to this specific one, but we do need, uh, some sort of commitment. That it will be some sidewalks later.
Well, again, I think from a staff perspective, we've, and, and Mr. Prague is shaking his head in agreement. We've been having this conversation about sidewalks. Throughout the city, and I think, I think it's, it's just gonna continue to be. Um. You know, one of the things that we've worked on over the last year and a half, and, and I think Ms. McCollie can agree with this too. We've been figuring out how to make sure that on the residential side, it hasn't been an issue with our subdivisions, our big ones. But our infill, we've missed some of those sidewalks, and we're trying to make sure that we don't do that going forward in the future, so. It's become, I mean, we've become very acutely aware of the issue around sidewalks, um. We're aware of it. And so we're not gonna let it go. Um, we do know also that with a, um, a development that's been proposed down, again, on the Laurel Gates area. Again, that development code calls for a sidewalk or, um, a walking path. And it's on, um, Mr. Prague's and my list to, uh, kind of get together with those landowners down there and say, okay, what's it gonna be? A walking path or a sidewalk and where do you want it? Um, and then over time, figure out how we get that one done too. And that one, I feel like it's kind of a path to nowhere, because then you have to deal with getting under the freeway to get to. The port side and, and yet. It's a requirement, and so we need to figure out how we address those requirements, we either need to. Determine where they would not be applicable and clearly state that in the code, or figure out how we require it and move forward.
These are all good problems to have. By the way.
They are.
Cause we could be the exact opposite, have sidewalks that nobody's walking. Big buildings are empty. Which is not the case, so we're in good shape.
Yeah.
So, and as we continue the conversation.
Any other questions for staff? This is good. I think I'm personally leaning towards more agreeing with. What Mike is saying, I think George makes an excellent point, um, I think he's spot on. Like, we've heard about the traffic. Study on Main Street, the amount of traffic has increased, I see it. Every day at the Port interchange, it is. Crazy, is putting it lightly. Uh, every time, between, uh, five and six thirty A M. Um. Sometimes sounds quite dangerous. Uh. And I, I, like I said, I don't know what that does with the, the foot traffic, and I mean, Mike's got a. Front row seat, and I'm sure it's, it's quite a bit, because. Um. You know what it actually is, but I have no doubt it's.
I usually there at five thirty. But. Throughout the day, it's just, it's, it gets busier all the time, every time I notice it, it's like there's more people, there's more people walking.
Yeah, I think we need to do something. Uh, I don't, I don't know that it makes sense to. Couple it with this particular, uh, application. But I don't, I think invariably we can't ignore it, um, both. For beautification and safety and accessibility, um. You know, and all those reasons, so.
I think Land Weston's been here long enough and they've proven that they, they work with the community, I don't think it's gonna be an issue, um. You know, regardless of. Whether he takes the next job up and somebody else is there, that there's, they're gonna be a part of the community, they're still gonna help. I don't think that, that, that's not a concern.
And for the, the. Know, um, about the, the road, um, and the potential agreement of. In agreement with what was in the staff report as well, with the recommendation for. The same decoupled, uh, agreement. You know, to look for. Um. What was it, it's Olson Road?
Just the, just the north side, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I just need anything else outstanding, everything else looked pretty straightforward, if I have any other questions. Do we wanna?
Yep.
Discuss this, we wanna make a motion?
Yeah.
Those who are in agreement with, um. Uh, approving the site design review with the discussion we had about. Uh, a, a decoupled agreement for the future conversations about. A sidewalk on Columbia. However, that pans out and Olson Road. Separate.
So just for staff clarity, as you, as you're moving towards a motion, um. Do you want it? Are, are you leaning towards adding a second condition that would basically have a remonstrance agreement? Or some kind of agreement for future sidewalk improvements? So not, say you have to do the sidewalks with this improvement, but have them actually enter into some kind of agreement with the city. Relative to the sidewalk improvements?
That is a good question, I, I am in favor of. Of attaching an agreement, uh, uh, some kind of. Total agreement or commit the two come to an agreement. As part of this, um. Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
It's, to me.
Attaching to this versus not.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's, it's, I don't think that if we, whether we have it, if we have an agreement that we will discuss it or. Um, or. They're not, I don't, I don't think that they're gonna, I don't know that we need to make it that official, I don't think that Land Weston's gonna have a problem coming to the table when we ask it to. Um, but if, if, uh, if, if for official reasons, it's something we should do. Then, yeah, I don't, I, I think we probably should, maybe.
You have thoughts on that?
You know, I, I, um. I am probably less concerned about a remonstrance agreement for the sidewalks than I am for the road.
I agree.
Um. The remonstrance agreement related to the road to me is. Um, something very specific, we don't have a project scope, we don't know what the cost will be, we know we're gonna have to get additional right away. We, we haven't talked about that project, other than we know that we need to figure out how to make improvements on Olson from Columbia to Eldridge. We just know that. Eldridge is gonna continue to have business decided on it, we're gonna continue to see more pro, more traffic in that loop. Um, the sidewalk is, I think, in some respects, uh, be, even beyond this project. Um, because I think you're right, we're talking about a sidewalk from Olson to.
Right.
Laurel.
And that's, like I said, the official, the official part of it, to just put them in it. Um, when there's other players involved, I mean, they're not the only ones on that road.
Right.
So, um. Who knows who will be invited to that table when it, whenever.
Well, it'll be Lamb Weston and Lamb Weston and Oregon Potato and.
Lamb Weston, yeah.
You know, so there'll be a number of people that will, will be invited to that table, but I think it also begs the question, is it a sidewalk on one side? Is it sidewalk on both sides, is sidewalk on one side and a path on the other? I mean, I think there's a lot of things that go into that eventual conversation.
Yes, and everybody will benefit from it, both sides, I mean, and there's businesses, lots of.
And, and we will invite the Park and Rec District to that conversation too, because they're a property owner along that road. And they have a vested interest in sidewalks for walkability and.
Sure.
So, um, you know, it will be a broad-based conversation when that happens.
Those are points, yeah.
So I am less concerned about it being attached to this decision. I think your, your discussion and the meeting minutes will adequately represent what we talked about. Um, we should probably say on the record, so it's recorded and in the notes that our, our. Lamb Weston Flat Manager's been nodding his head, yeah, stream off this conversation, so, um. Uh, but yeah, I, I, I am not concerned about it being officially attached. I think we have converged about it, and I think there's an expectation. Staff, hear your expectations, I think the applicant has heard your expectations, and, and I think our commenter has heard your expectations, so. I, I would just say, you know, we'll make sure that, you know, three to six months, we put something on the agenda and we come back to you and we tell you. Hey, this is what's happening with sidewalk conversation.
That's fair.
Yep.
Okay.
Does anyone wanna entertain a motion? Please.
I would, I don't know how to do it yet, so I'm just still listening.
Handing your script. Is it right?
Like, uh, okay, so. I moved to approve site design review R B W twenty-three dash zero 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 one zero. Um, as presented. Uh. As amended, no, as amended, well, it's already in there though. As, as.
We're not amended.
It's not.
Right, as presented. As presented, yeah, yeah, as presented.
Okay, so motion to approve site design review. As presented. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so motion to approve site design review R B W two-three dash zero zero zero, zero one zero. As presented, motion is seconded, uh, can we do a roll call vote, please?
We can. Commissioner Layton?
Yes.
Commissioner Connell?
Yes.
Commissioner Irons?
Yes.
Commissioner Cannon, no. And Chair Berisi?
Yes.
Okay, motion, uh, is approved.
Go ahead.
We will get you gentlemen, uh, little documents, um. In the next five days. Plus or minus. Okay, but you're ready to roll, you've got an F D L at hand, you can move on to submit your building permits.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you, George.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. All right, next to the item, uh, discussion items. We're gonna see.
So I do want to have a little bit of time tonight to talk about this, um, mostly because, um. We, well, we can. Let me just say the new city manager's a bit of a taskmaster. And he has a lot of grand ideas and, um. And he, he has a, um, an ambitious timeline to, to. Put it mildly. Um. We're, we're working on, we're working on so many things, I, I kind of lose track, and, um. One of the things we're working on is a capital improvement plan. And in that, he's asked for me to kind of formulate. What all, from the planning document perspective, needs to be updated. And then what kind of additional inputs do we need to do that update work? What are ti, potential timelines, kind of what's the dominos, what needs to come first, what comes second, what comes after that? Um, and then any anticipated costs, you know, if I, if I have a clue what they might be. I think we have. Five grants that are, were somewhere in the process of, two of them we've received. So we're two for five, I'm like, can we get to the trifecta and then see what happens after that? Um, the two that we have received, um. One is a public works project, we received a small city allocation, it's two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, for a planned project to do water, water, wastewater and pavement on Colum, Columbia, yes. And so this is in the residential area predominantly, and that project will happen this next year. And then the other one we got was the, um, Transportation Growth Management Grant. Um, to update our transportation system plan. I, I think the whole office staff was. They could hear me. When I got the email. So, um, that's, um, almost, uh, it's just shy of two hundred fifty thousand dollars as well. Um, we're gonna have a meeting on Thursday and we'll kind of go sort through and see how much we're, we're actually gonna get. We'll have some better clarity on that and what all will be encompassed in that. Um, but we are at this point, we've also done a grant application, we've not heard back on this yet. To do an economic opportunities analysis for employment lands, um. To do some updates to our goal line and our comprehensive plan, and then potentially begin to look at our industrial, commercial industrial use zones in our development code. Um, we're also looking towards updating the development code, that's kind of been on the radar for a while. Uh, we do need some other inputs before we get too far along into that, and before we start working on the comprehensive plan, there's a couple of external. Um, reports that we need to have, one being the economic opportunity analysis, another one an update to our housing needs analysis. There was one done in eighteen nineteen collaboratively with county and the rest of the cities in the, in, in Laurel County. But Boardman didn't do anything with that end product. Um, so at this point in time, we've probably blown through the numbers of it anyway, with what's been happening with River Ridge and Tuscany and some of the other developments. But, um, we did have a meeting Monday. Uh, the city through Anderson Perry is working with a consulting firm by the name of OTAC. And we are working on a. Basically a code audit of the Boardman Development Code. So we're looking at the development code, not from the perspective of doing the red lines yet. But looking at it both from breadth and depth as to, well, what, what do we need to change? Where are the problems, what are the issues? And so we kind of had the kickoff conversation on Monday. And we just went ahead and jumped right in and got through chapters one, five and six, and so we've already. and we just went ahead and jumped right in and got through chapters one, five and six. And so we've already kind of outlined those. We're going to get together over the next four Mondays and we're going to look at chapters two, three and four. Um, so by the end of that period of time, the consultant firm should have most of the information that they can get from staff to fully kind of finish the audit of, of the development code. And that's really just outlining again from both the breadth and the depth. What all do we need to look at? What kinds of things do we need to assess? What kind of external information do we need to go find? So, um, hopefully we'll have that done, um, as we, um, conclude that and we're looking at that being concluded by the end of the year with a final product by the middle of January. Hopefully that means that the, we may have, we may have a draft of something that we can bring back to you in December, but we should have a final code audit to bring to you in January. Um, and I'm, I'm hoping that maybe we can have something in December to bring to you a draft form so that you guys can kind of look at that. In fact, help me remember to reach out to Chris and Steven on that.
For Christmas.
Pardon?
For Christmas.
Yeah, Christmas present, um, that for, for, for December, we can have a conversation around that. And so you guys could kind of understand what we're thinking about needs to happen with the development code. And then if you guys have any thoughts, we can, we can get into a, a little more depth in the detail of, of what we're thinking works and doesn't work. Uh, in, in fact, we had a prime example, we had an interesting inquiry from a person who has a, a, a real estate agent who has a client who may be interested in relocating a business here. And they're looking at the housing market as well as the business market and it's really good for the business side, but they're looking at the housing side going, oh my gosh. And so the question was raised, well, can I do, can I do a mixed use? Can I live in the same building where I'm doing my business in? And the property she's looking at, the answer is yes, it allows for mixed use. Well, what does that mean? We have no standards for how we would implement a mixed use development, none. I mean, we allow it, but what does that mean? Is it, is it only commercial bottom floor residential has to be up floor? Is it front and back? There's no, no standards, no, no guidance. So those are the kinds of things that we're trying to capture and make notes so that when we're doing, go through this code audit, we can get those things captured. And then we know, we start actually getting in and updating the code and doing the red lines. We know what we need to go steal from Hermiston or Portland or Bend or whoever to better inform our development code. So that the next time somebody says, well, can I do mixed use? Sure. How do I do it? Right here, this is how you do it. Because right now I can't answer that. This is how you do a question. So that, that's what's happening. Um, needless to say, we're going to be really busy over the next, um, eighteen months. So I'm trying to really encourage, um, Mr. Hammond that this, all this work he wants to do is like a three to five, you know, maybe a seven year project. And he's like, that's eighteen months to two years. So if it's eighteen months to two years for me, just guess what that means for you all.
Some working sessions, I think.
It does mean some working sessions. It will mean a technical advisory or a, a public advisory committee, um, which will ask a council member and a planning commission member or two to sit on, um, encourage a couple of our community folks, like maybe Mr. Schiner, um, with the rec district to join a, a public advisory. He's nodded, I want that on the record, he's not against. Um,
We're here to help.
So, you know, get a few people around, you know, get a, get a group, good group, seven, eight, ten, twelve around. Get too big, it doesn't, you don't get anywhere, but get some people around the table that you can have some conversations. Um, clearly for industrial areas, we're going to want to engage our port and maybe some of our port businesses. For commercial areas, we're going to, I want to encourage those who are already doing business here or might want to do business here. Um, for residential, we probably want to make sure we engage, um, you know, a builder or two. And again, I'm not thinking those people need to come to every meeting, but when we're talking about things that are pertinent to those areas, we want to make sure they're fully engaged and available. So I, I think we're going to be busy for the next, I don't know how long. So that wasn't just the Boardman Development Code, that, that kind of gives you an update of where we are. Um, one of the other grants we have out is a technical assistance grant. And that's to do some more, that's to do the economic opportunities analysis. Um, that is a goal nine input on the comprehensive plan side and would also provide some insight into our, um, employment lands use zone, so commercial and industrial use zones. And then, um, the TSP update will also hopefully provide some code update or some, or some input, if not actual update, um, some input to when we do do the development code, those things that we need to address. And I think the biggest thing we're looking at, we've been talking about for a while is we have a lot of conflict with standards, um, between the development code, the TSP and then our public work standards. And we want to get to the point where we have standards in one place. Um, most likely in the public work standards. So our development code, our TSP, all of those, we will strip all those standards out of there. And what I, I mean, like, the road has to be this wide and have this many lanes and have this much space walk. We'll take that out of all the codes and the, the transportation system plans and refer everybody to our public work standards and have those clearly delineated in one, in one location. Too many cities and, and jurisdictions have conflicts because it's adopted it, you know, ten years ago in this document and then seven years ago, they adopted a different document, forgot they had a standard over here and they adopted a different standard and now they don't know which one's applicable. Um, and, and under the law, they're both applicable. So which one do you actually apply? So we want to try to eliminate that by pull all of our, pulling all of our standards into one location. That's the highlights of what I wanted to share. And again, Nancy Brown worked out a month and a half? Month and a half, she's learning fast.
Still enjoying it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, she wrote, she wrote most of the staff report tonight. Um, she did last month's minutes. She's going to do this month's minutes. Um, she's going to start her first type two, um, review process tomorrow with a, uh, an application for a land petition from the port. That won't come in front of you because it is a type two decision. Um, so yeah, she's learning fast, which is good. Yeah, I think that's it.
Sounds good. Uh, let's open for public comment. Would you like to comment in public?
I do.
And we thought you'd stayed here just
Enjoy the
Yeah.
meeting. I'm learning from Karen really well. You know, Karen talked very heated. Okay, so for Karen, I'm talking as a owner, um, my address is three fifteen North West Boardman Avenue. Okay, um, okay, um, I know Carla referred to it earlier about sidewalks. I, I really want to see the city. I want to see the planning commission when, when projects are coming out, that we really enforce that sidewalk are put in on a residential residence, homes. Currently, my house, I do not have a sidewalk. I'm planning on putting a sidewalk, because I, we're the plan that was, we thought about, uh, a program and soon that program comes about, definitely put a sidewalk in. Um, I'm going to do some changes to widen up the where my property line is, I'm going to make it wider so that our team can double could, where my property is, it slopes down into my yard. And I'm going to retain a little up and we're going to level that off, so there's people that need to walk, they don't, they're not right on the road. Um, the other thing I want to bring up to your point is the, um, um, school, the safe, safe school paths.
Safe routes to school.
Safe route to school, thank you. Uh, safe routes to schools, uh, in, we've got to make sure that all our view have accessible, safe routes. Um, I, I know that, um, before Barry passed on, we were working on, uh, pathway for those at Bella Vista. I know you guys are working, you've got great plans working on that to make that happen now. Um, we need to make sure that any, any other projects that are going on or the renewal, put the street through, uh, on Boardman Avenue, uh, we got to make sure there's safe grounds for the kids. So, um, and Carla did bring up to me the, the zoning issue, but the park and rec.
I haven't shared that one yet, yes.
We'll talk about that another time.
Yeah.
And thanks for your commitment to making our board bring better talent and everything. We do appreciate that.
And, and you missed my recruitment message at the beginning of the meeting, uh, with two vacancies.
Yeah, I know that.
They only meet once a month.
I think it's taken over at the park and rec, uh, the opportunities are served, I've just been flying out.
But maybe you have employees or two down there that might be
I will bring that up.
Okay, staff meeting next one, yeah.
I really appreciate you coming to talk. I think it's really important.
Yeah.
And I think it's pretty awesome to be here.
Yeah.
Just briefly, the zoning issue that you brought up, um, we have, uh, the Army Core Property in the city. Um, the portion where the city has some improvements on it has been designated as public open space. But all the area where the park is and, and beyond has no zoning applied to it. And so what I was bringing up with, I'm going to be a little more informal, but I was bringing it with George when we were talking yesterday.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, uh, was that there's no standards. So if he were to come in and say, I want to build pickleball courts, I don't have a standard to apply. And so, um,
I told you that's an easy one, that's just a guess.
So it's, it's problematic. I mean, it's problematic for what the city's doing. Um, when federal government owns property and the federal government makes improvements to that property, they are not compelled to get local permits. Um, when I was at the county, we had an interesting situation where, um, they needed to get an address for this project and they needed to, um, interestingly enough, because the federal government has delegated the onsite septic, um, program to the state. They had to get an, an, uh, an approval from DEQ for the onsite septic system for this project. And DEQ can't, can't issue that until they get, um, an authorization from the local planning authority. So it's actually able to hook them and get them to have to get permits for their project in order to issue the, the, uh, the land use compatibility statement for the DEQ permit and then issue the, the, um, uh, the address. So it's kind of this interesting relationship. If the federal government's doing the project, they do not, they did huge improvements out on bombing range. And interestingly enough, they, they had to get building permits, but they did not have to get local land use permits from the county. Um, and so it's, it's kind of this, it's this frustration when you're working with federal government. But when a local entity leases that property, they have to comply with local land use requirements. And so we really do need to zone that unzoned property, um, and, and then have standards for that zone so that we can say, yes, George, they can't put in those pickleball courts and this is how we're going to approve it. So, um, it's just more work that's going to keep us busy, that's, I guess, as well, yeah. Yeah.
All right, uh, well, I guess next to our business, commission comments. So you have to comment about. Yep. All right, let's journey.
Uh,
No.
Probably no November meeting. We don't have anything scheduled. Um, December, I want to keep on the calendar. Um, I don't remember the date that that would be. It is kind of late in December, um, we can certainly look at, we can certainly look at a different date in December. I mean, if you wanted to not be so close to Christmas and pull that up a week, we could do December thirteenth.
Either way, I expect a present.
Uh, chocolate cookies, I don't know.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter? I don't think I'm going anywhere for Christmas, so, um, December, I can make December twentieth work, so.
Yeah, I can make that too. I'm gone in November, but.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna say December, we just say December twenty, um, because I do want to bring that, um, a code audit at a minimum. I, again, I don't have anything in the hopper that I'm aware of coming, but I just think that as, as all this stuff is happening with the grants, we, we, the grant we've received, um, the code audit, I, I just want to have the opportunity, maybe nothing more than a work session. Um, if we don't have anything else that's, that's coming through, so. Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, December twentieth is. If anything should change on our front, I'll let you know. We need to change that date if something should come up, but otherwise we'll spend twenty. Thank you for delaying your adjournment for a minute.
And now we're journey.